Thank you.
Rob, you got the stuff?
Um, sure, I need a copy.
Oh, when we go down, when we go down.
So how do you want to display?
Rob.
Oh, I held out every one of them. That's the head. And there was nothing on the table when we got there. So what do we do? Okay, now, what's the order?
Rob will probably be one of the steps.
I'm not gonna wait down there? When, and you wanna wait up? Okay, so when it comes to that, then, you and I will walk around and then you down. Okay. And then, oh, you're doing the first floor, we're being the preparation before you? And then you gotta write up a first order? Okay, got it. Okay, you just tell me the order. What?
You see, tennis, I definitely feel that way.
Well, I know I feel that either way today. Tony, you ready?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know where the tennis is. I don't know where tennis is, we gotta start.
Do, hold on.
Okay, we gotta start. Yeah.
Tony, are we waiting for?
He's gonna look in the media center, but I don't think we should delay it. I think he's gonna kinda look in the media center. But I don't think we should delay it, let's start it. Yeah? I can't hear what you're saying. What do you, how do you wanna handle that? I don't usually come to a board meeting. Well, are you not starting because people aren't masked though?
No, I was gonna wait on Mr. Bogdanovich.
Oh.
Missing something, right?
It appears as though you have, you have one or two who aren't masked. I think, I think what you would do, well, you probably, you also had some outbursts as well, right? But I think what you do is, whether you start, ask everybody to put their masks on for purpose of the meeting, and then just go, and then we'll see how we go.
I apologize for the delay, we're gonna get started now. Before we start the meeting, I just ask that everybody please wear their, their masks while they're inside the auditorium. Thanks. I call this meeting to order, will everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and are transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star Ledger newspapers, tapped into online news, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Dechara. Mrs. Miga.
Here.
Mr. Splendoria.
Present.
Mr. Shoner.
Here.
Mrs. Dai.
Here. Good evening, everyone, good evening, Board.
Evening.
So, we have a bunch of things to, I think, congratulate people on, which is very exciting. But before we do that, I think we have, does anyone have any committee reports?
I do.
Ms. Miga?
Hello, everyone, and everyone watching at home. As I said last month, what a fall for Cedar Grove. Our four sports across the board have been highly successful, and I am glad we get to honor the teams and coaches this evening. Congratulations to all of the coaches and the teams. I also wanted to acknowledge that we had a few Coaches of the Year this year and players that achieved many individual accolades, in addition to the teams. So congratulations to everybody out there. On December 3rd, I attended the Cedar Grove Recreation 55th Annual Tree Lighting. It was very well attended and great to see so many smiling faces. The event went great and Santa made a grand entrance on a helicopter, for those of you that don't know, and it was a major highlight of the night. I did also attend a town council meeting on December 6th, in which the Cedar Grove High School softball team and Coach Nikki Velardi received the Cedar, received the Recreation Advisory Board Award for their involvement in softball in the town with the youth players, running summer camps, coaching teams, and working with the suburban team and the Cedar Grove Baseball and Softball League teams. Congratulations to all. I would also like to acknowledge a former kindergarten teacher, Norma Bernardi, who made a big impact on so many here in Cedar Grove. Mrs. Bernardi will always be remembered as such a kind, loving teacher, who took care of many of her students, and many said she had the nicest handwriting. That's how she would be remembered by many. May you rest in peace, Mrs. Bernardi, and thank you for your dedication to the Cedar Grove students. Let me also congratulate one more group of people. We have Educators of the Year and Ed Specialists of the Year. I'm not gonna say all their names, but it's very well deserved, and thank you for all that you do. I would also like to wish everybody a very happy and healthy holiday season and look forward to what 2022 may bring us. Thank you.
Okay, we're just gonna go in order for the Board presentations, and the first one I have is the Cedar Grove High School Cheerleaders, the 2022 National Competition, the trip proposal.
You guys need the screen? Okay.
I don't know if this is, oh, this is. Okay. Good evening, everyone. For those who may not know who I am, my name is Nicola McCarthy. I am the head coach of the Cedar Grove High School Cheer Program.
And I'm Julia Giacobi, I am the assistant coach of our cheerleading program.
Tonight, what we'd like to do, we would like to propose a Nationals trip for our competition team to head to the national competition in Orlando, Florida. So just an overview of what the trip would entail. The name of the competition is the 2022 AmeriCheer National Championship, again located in Orlando, Florida. The dates we will be attending is Thursday, March 17th to Monday, March 21st. The competition is a two-day event, which would take place Saturday, March 19th and Sunday, March 20th. We have a total of 12 student athletes, which would put us in the small all-music category, and we would have two Board-approved coaches attending as well. So goals for attending a national competition. The overarching goal is to become a nationally recognized and ranked high school competition cheer team. It is also a once-in-a-lifetime team bonding experience for the girls, besides the athletic portion of it. We also look to strengthen the program and current student athletes, as well as showcase our talent in a larger-scaled national competition. Just a little bit more of the company itself. So the name of the company is AmeriCheer National Championship. It is a national cheerleading competition company. It offers a larger-scaled competition to all high schools all across the nation. It also provides an opportunity for cheerleading programs to end their season strong by competing against the top teams in the country. It is a successful showcase, um, I'm sorry, a successful showcase in AmeriCheer could secure a national ranking for the Cedar Grove High School Cheer Program, which has been done previously, and on behalf of myself, Coach Julia, and the girls, it's something we would look forward to having done yet again. And similar to what I said before, the Cedar Grove High School Competition Team actually competed here before, previously placing third in 2016. So the trip details, similar to what I said before, it would be the competition date Saturday, March 19th and Sunday, March 20th. AmeriCheer Nationals includes a competition package, accommodating the girls with a four-night accommodation stay at Universal Studios Cabana Bay Beach Resort, registration for the competition, admission into the venue, admission to a victory party, which is open to all teams at the completion of the competition itself, transportation to and from the venue and the hotel, and a three-parked, three-day park-to-park Universal Park ticket, which we would entail during our team bonding. Flights and transportation to and from airport are not included within this package, but we do incorporate within our estimate final total. So just a brief explanation of what the trip would entail. Thursday, we would fly from Newark to Orlando. We would check into the hotel, myself and Coach Julia would check in with the competition, make sure everything is finalized well. We would go for team bonding in one of the parks, shuttle back to the hotel, change shower, have a team dinner, and room check-in, lights out. Friday would be our practice day, so we would have a team breakfast at the hotel. We would practice, once again, have a team bonding in the parks, followed by a team dinner and room check-in, lights out, once again. Saturday and Sunday are the biggest days for us, they would be our competition days. So we would start off with the team breakfast, we would shuttle to the Orange County Convention Center for the first day of AmeriCheer Nationals competition. We would compete, receive our scores from judges, take that information, and bring it back to us to prepare for the next day. With that being said, we would shuttle back to the hotel, have a dinner, and room check-in, lights out. Then, on Sunday, would be the second day of the competition. We would arrive back to the Orange County Convention Center for Day Two, compete once more, receive our final scores, and that would be the end of the competition portion of the trip. We would be shuttled back to the hotel to prepare for a dinner at the victory party, again open to all teams that participate, returning back to the hotel afterwards, and then room check-in, lights out. Monday would wrap up the trip, we would have a breakfast as a team, shuttle to the theme park, which would be a team option for team bonding, and then we would fly from Orlando to Newark that day. Cost and fundraising, so the estimate total cost per athlete would be $1,500. We did incorporate a lot of fundraising efforts this year. We have previous fundraising done during the Signlight Cheer Season, as well as some future fundraising events, such as a competition cheer fashion show that we are hosting in February, a December calendar raffle, which we just completed, which raised $500 per athlete. We have a Krispy Kreme fundraiser, and we will continue to add more if we feel necessary. So just to recap everything, we have a total of 12 amazing athletes, I might note. Two Board-approved coaches, it would be from Thursday, March 17th to Monday, March 21st. It is a two-day competition, and we would be staying on Universal property in Orlando, Florida. I thank you all for your support, and thank you for your time.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Steve Gallagher, social studies teacher at the school. Good evening, Mr. Grosso, members of Board of Education. I come before you again tonight seeking your approval to take the education of our Advanced Placement Dual Enrollment Students to another level, a level where they can connect theory with practice. For the last 11 or 12 years, our students have worked very hard toward learning about the United States government. In all this time, they've relied on the word of others to grasp the understanding of United States history. The students in the Advanced Placement classes of U.S. History, Economics, Government Politics, and the Dual Enrollment Introduction to Criminal Justice have excelled academically and are the role models of our school. They truly are the future leaders of our society. I'm asking for you to allow us to provide these students with an opportunity to visit our nation's capital. This would be a perfect culmination of the many years they have spent studying our history and government. This would be the ninth trip to the nation's capital. The previous trips have been absolutely amazing. The feedback from the students is overwhelmingly positive. Each year, we have our students hand in their critique of their classes, and every student who has gone to Washington has written about how much they've learned and enjoyed the trip. We've even had students who apply to colleges in DC because of their experiences on this trip. Allow me to take you on a brief journey to highlight our trip. We'll visit the White House, where so many world-changing decisions have been made. Many decisions will affect these students for the rest of their lives. Now, considering COVID, the White House and Congress will be pending with the COVID responses there. The Supreme Court, whose decisions over time have radically altered our society, a place where America's most powerful people determine the direction of our country. And if possible, we'll see government in action by personally observing Congress in session, to actually watch a debate on the floor of Congress, to walk the halls of Congress, where everything from minimum wages to declaring war has been fought over. We will walk the hallowed grounds of Arlington National Cemetery to see the flicker of the eternal flame at the tomb of President Kennedy. We will pay tribute to the heroes at the tomb of the Unknown Soldier, as we observe the somber ceremony of the changing of the guard. And who could go to Washington, DC and not visit two of the most prominent sites, the Washington Monument and the Lincoln Memorial? Most people have visited these places during the day, but a nighttime visit truly changes the experience. There's a feeling of reverence as you gaze upon the walls at night. Two memorials that some of these students can relate to personally would be the World War II and Vietnam Memorial. Their great-grandparents and grandparents can remember the stories they were told about the feeling of the country during World War II, and some of the grandparents could very well have served in Korea or Vietnam. Even if they did not serve, they can recall the division of our country at the time. Washington, DC offers a wide range of museums where actual pieces of our history are displayed. Whether it's art and science travel, there is a museum which appeals to everyone's taste. So, the method of transportation is another first for Cedar Grove. We'll be taking Amtrak. It's another opportunity for students to learn mass transit and how to navigate mass transit. So, we'll take Amtrak from Penn Station in Newark to Union Station in Washington, and from there, we'll take the Metro, which takes us directly to our hotel. We'll be staying in the Capital Holiday Inn, and we've stayed at this hotel for years, and the style and location is a perfect fit for us. The Capital Holiday Inn is located one block from the Air and Space Museum, and is walking distance everything we want to see. Caveat to that, walking distance for me may be different for your children, because four or five miles is not a big deal to walk. For them, it might be. So, we will walk anywhere from 40 to 50 miles on this weekend. We don't take buses anywhere, okay? So, we do a lot of walking. If it's raining, we are one block from the Metro. At that point, we could take that to our hotel. I know this is an excellent opportunity for our students to reserve their government they've been learning about. I believe that if given this opportunity, they'll remember this trip for the rest of their lives. The trip is from May 13th to May 17th. We'll be going to Washington in two groups, because five of our students are still taking an AP exam on Friday, the 13th, that afternoon. So, Ms. McCarthy will travel with them on the afternoon of the 13th. The morning of the 13th, Ms. Bowie and I will take the rest of them, and we'll get to DC ahead of them. We will all return on the 17th together. Transportation to and from Penn Station to Newark is upon the parents to get the children there and to pick them up. They usually carpool. I will be there. Ms. Bowie will be there early in the morning, so the kids, they pull up in front, the kids come right to us, and we have a group rate, so I've asked Amtrak to give us our own car, so that they're going to make every attempt to do that for us on our way down. Thank you for the opportunity to present this. I'd be very happy to answer any questions either Mr. Grosso or members of the board may have about the trip.
Good evening. I'm here to present our Fall Athletic Season Championship Teams from this past fall. Before I do so, I do want to, you know, I have a, you know, a brief summary. This Fall Athletic Season was, you know, dynamite. You know, our teams have been through a lot. Our student athletes have been through a lot, dealing with protocols, COVID, canceled seasons, shortened seasons, tournaments being, you know, taken out. And I can't give enough credit to our student athletes for staying the course, you know, showing up each day, battling adversity, you know, taking on kind of whatever was thrown at them. And this fall, you know, is, you know, it's extra special for me, because in my eyes, you know, being from here, watching Cedar Grove Athletics for a long time, it's probably one of the best overall fall seasons we've ever had here, athletic-wise. Just to name a few things before I get into each individual team. We had four conference championship teams: Girls Tennis, Girls Soccer, Boys Soccer, Football and Cheer, and obviously one individual conference champion. We had two teams win state championships, and one individual win a state championship, which is outstanding. And we had four out of our seven fall teams reach the state sectional semifinal round. Me being a sport guy and coaching and, you know, being in this for a long time, that's not an easy feat. We're talking, you know, the final four teams of each section. We had four of our teams do that this year with Boys Soccer, Football, Girls Soccer, and Girls Tennis, and Girls Volleyball, excuse me. Forty-seven of our fall student athletes made an all-conference team. We had 73 all of last year, so that kind of shows you the kind of fall we had. Eleven athletes made NJ.com Group One All-State Teams this fall. We had eight make it last year total. You know, it just, you know, again, I kind of joke with some of our winter and spring coaches, you know, to ride the wave kind of right now and keep it going. But just kudos to all these student athletes and teams. You know, we're going to start to honor. We have proclamations for each team. I'm going to go through them real quick. I'm going to ask Mrs. Dai and Mr. Grosso to come up here to present these teams with the proclamations. We did, I'm going to start with Girls Tennis. We did misplace your proclamations. They kind of disappeared right now, so bear with us. We're going to start with our Girls Tennis Team, who won the Super Essex Conference Colonial Division Championship with a division record of 7-0. It's the first time... Jumping the gun on the, well, what I think is the kind of best part of this, it's the first time in school history our Girls Tennis Team has won a conference championship. So, just super... I know what the proclamation said, so I'm going to kind of go off that one. Proclamation congratulating the Cedar Grove High School Girls Tennis Team on their championship, whereas during the Fall Athletic Season of 2021, the Cedar Grove High School Girls Tennis Team won the Super Essex Colonial Division Championship, whereas this team had a perfect Super Essex Conference Colonial Division Record of 7-0, and whereas this team won the first-ever Cedar Grove High School Girls Tennis Conference Championship. And we're going to call you girls up. If you could come up and kind of line up here so we could get a quick picture. Our Girls Tennis Team, Nancy Guan, Delia Jelski, Devin Taggart, Yi Lin Zhao, Krista Fox, Danica Jelski, Marina Fahim, Melanie Heim, Selina Zhang, Simran Gupta, Sophia Laforja, and Coaches Heather DiPuzo and Kirsten Meteski. I do have to mention Coach Reed. I call her Coach Reed. She was recently married. And Coach Meteski are both Cedar Grove Tennis graduates, so, you know, winning that conference championship, I know, is extra special to them as well. So, great job, Coaches. Our next championship team, our Girls Soccer Team, won the Super Essex Colonial Division Championship. They finished the SEC Colonial Division with a perfect record of 8-0, had an overall record of 15-5. Like I said before, they advanced to the state sectional final by defeating in the second round a Glen Ridge team, which won nine straight sectional championships. You know, think about that for like, for one second. Glen Ridge came here, winning nine straight state championship teams. It's probably one of the best wins we've had here this fall, just an overall phenomenal season by our Girls Soccer Team. I'm going to let Mrs. Dai read the Girls Soccer proclamation.
Proclamation congratulating the Cedar Grove High School Girls Soccer Team on their championship. Whereas during the Fall Athletic Season of 2021, the Cedar Grove High School Girls Soccer Team won the Super Essex Conference Colonial Division Championship, whereas this team had a perfect Super Essex Conference Colonial Division Record of 8-0, whereas this team had an overall season record of 15-5. Whereas, the 2021 team roster was Ellie Dai, Isabella Zahn, Patience Abud, Sophia DiMatto, Ashley Godio, Megan LaSala, Alyssa Malek, Cecilia Wojcik, Kaitlin Wolf, Gia Del Moro, Samira Lukovic, Gianna Tabarez, Victoria Babcock, Emma Birmingham, Ava Corbo, Jasmine Judenath, Catherine Lara, Sophia Penelozza, Ava Romero, Alexa Wolf, and Coaches Michael Massab and Vincent Fazio. Now, therefore, I, Christine Dai, and Anthony Grosso, on behalf of the Cedar Grove Board of Education and our school district, hereby congratulate the Cedar Grove High School Girls Soccer Team and wish them the very best of luck in the future. Congratulations.
And our Girls Soccer Players, please come up. Ellery Dai, Isabella Zahn, Patience Abud, Sophia DiMatto, Ashley Godio, Megan LaSala, Alyssa Malek, Cecilia Wojcik, Kaitlin Wolf, Gia Del Moro, Samira Lukovic, Gianna Tabarez, Victoria Babcock, Emma Birmingham, Ava Corbo, Jasmine Judenath, Catherine Lara, Sophia Penelozza, Ava Romero, Alexa Wolf, Coach Tom Muggin, and Coach Brian Meisner. Congratulations. Our next championship team will be our Boys Soccer Team. Just a historic season. Just a quick story, you know, as the season started going along, you know, I had athletic directors and colleagues, you know, confirm games with me, and they, you know, kept asking me, "Is your soccer team that good? Are they really that good, the boys, that good?" And I kept saying, "Yeah, you know, I think they're, I think they're pretty good," you know, and the season, and they kept winning. They kept winning. The playoffs kind of came around, and it was the same thing, you know, Whipney Park. "How good are you guys? You guys good?" You know, Glen Ridge, and kept saying, "We're good. We're good." And every time after the game, they were like, "You guys are good. You guys are real good." And I kept saying to them, "We're the real deal." This wasn't just a flash-in-the-pant type of season. A lot of hard work went into it. A lot of good seasons went into it, and they just continue to build and build. They finished as Super Essex Conference Colonial Division Champions with a perfect record of 8-0. They had an overall record of 19, 5, and 1, and for the first time in school history, they won the NJSIAA North Two Group One State Championship. Congratulations.
Cedar Grove School District Proclamation congratulating the Cedar Grove High School Boys Soccer Team on their championship. Whereas during the Fall Athletic Season of 2021, the Cedar Grove High School Boys Soccer Team won the NJ... Team won the NJ SIAA North 2 Group 1 State Championship. Whereas during the fall athletic season of 2021, the Cedar Grove High School Boys Soccer Team won the Super Essex Conference Colonial Division Championship. Whereas this team had a perfect Super Essex Conference Colonial Division Record of 8-0. Whereas this team had an overall season record of 19, 5, and 1. Whereas this team won the first ever boys' soccer state sectional championship in Cedar Grove High School's school history. Whereas the 2021 team roster was Zane Bajetti, Logan Brockincetto, Brandon Caddigan, Louis Sakala, Anthony Costanzo, Dylan Ferber, Kurt Hyer, Matthew Coolian, Peter Korzak, Samuel Merrick, Edward Matos, Michael Matos, Michael McAuliffe, Anthony Palmieri, Gareth Posnet, Maximus Rodriguez, Evan Shoner, Matthew Shoner, Paul Scabbage, Francis Reblay, and coaches Michael Musab and Vincent Fazio. Now, therefore I, Christine Die, and Anthony Grosso, on behalf of the Cedar Grove Board of Education and our school district, hereby congratulate the Cedar Grove High School Boys Soccer Team and wish them the very best of luck in the future. Congratulations.
I'm going to call you guys all up at once, so our championship boys' soccer team come up and receive your proclamations. Our next group, we're going to lump our cheerleaders and football team into one here. Just, you know, I know, you know, this is, you know, extra personal for me. You know, I know watching a lot of these teams throughout the year, they, they were putting a lot of pressure on myself, you know, I said, we got to keep winning too. And, and I can't say enough, I think I could be up here all night talking about our football team, but I'm going to save that for our banquet next month here. Just, you know, a super group of cheerleaders and football players that really raise the bar. They consistently, you know, shock me on, on, you know, you know, grabbing that high bar and just keep pushing it higher and higher each season. I really can't congratulate them enough. They have that, you know, no lose mentality that kind of started with the crazy Florida win and ended up at MetLife. You know, just an overall outstanding season by both our cheerleaders and our football team, finished as Super Football Conference Independent White Division Champions with a perfect 7-0 record. They had an overall record of 12-1, which was the most wins in Cedar Grove High School history. And they finished as the NJ SIAA North 2 Group 1 State Champions, and for the first time ever, NJ SIAA Group 1 North Regional State Champions. We're going to start with our cheerleaders.
Cedar Grove School District Proclamation congratulating the Cedar Grove High School Cheerleading Team on the championship season. Whereas during the fall athletic season of 2021, the Cedar Grove High School Cheerleading Team cheered and supported the NJ SIAA Group 1 North Regional State Championship and the NJ SIAA North 2 Group 1 State Championship Football Team. Whereas during the fall athletic season of 2021, the Cedar Grove High School Cheerleading Team cheered and supported the Super Football Conference Independent White Division Championship Football Team. Whereas this team continued to perform one of the best halftime routines in the state, earning the Super Essex Conference Best Dance Routine at the 2021 SEC Cheer for the Cure Competition. Whereas the 2021 team roster was Sarah Borges, Gianna Carmucci, Arielyn Carpenter, Ava Casilli, Ashley Coletta, Sophia Cordero, Gabriela DiMatteia, J.C. Elting, Madison Foster, Emma Fusco, Sienna Giordano, Rachel Harmon, Madeline Heenan, Mackenzie Jennings, Gillian Johnson, Jessica Kelly, Juliana Machochi, Madison Matos, Emma Mikalski, Emma Millman, Maria Pereira, Mia Piazza, Ava Petrowski, Kirsten Rush, Olivia Rico, Leila Sidadi, Olivia Skidalich, Elena Spina, Jenna Staba, Christina Tifori, Gianna Tangora, Skylah Vega, Alyssa Velasquez, Nicole Verrolik, and coaches Nicolette McCarthy and Julia Jacoby. Now, therefore I, Christine Die, and Anthony Grosso, on behalf of the Cedar Grove Board of Education and our school district, hereby congratulate the Cedar Grove High School Cheerleading Team and wish them the very best of luck in the future. Congratulations.
Will our championship cheer team please come up to receive your proclamation?
Cedar Grove School District Proclamation congratulating the Cedar Grove High School Football Team on their championship season. Whereas during the fall athletic season of 2021, the Cedar Grove High School Football Team won the NJ SIAA Group 1 North Regional State Championship and the NJ SIAA North 2 Group 1 State Championship. Whereas during the fall athletic season of 2021, the Cedar Grove High School Football Team won the Super Football Conference Independent White Division Championship. Whereas this team had an overall season record of 12-1. Whereas this team won the first ever Group 1 North Regional State Championship in Cedar Grove High School's school history. Whereas the 2021 team roster was Luca Vias, Christopher Babcock, Adolfo Caddio, James Canarelli, Giovani Casilli, Santino Catalano, Nicholas Cristiano, Nicholas Coletta, Edmund Dacker, Jamie DeSilva, Benjamin DeChera, Lucas Droge, Nicholas Droge, Matthew Duarte, Thomas Gabriel, Nicholas DiNero, Joseph Gorgon, Giancarlo Gonzalez, Nicholas Iannacone, Denim Ingles, Andrew Jimenez, Jake Jordan, Robert Kelly, Aiden Kearney, Connor Kearney, Mason Kizniak, Alfonso Lombardi, Michael Marinelli, Dante Martinez, William Mazel, Matthew McAuliffe, Patrick McCarthy, Christian Morris, Jackson Morris, Christopher Nicoletti, Anthony Payne, Stephen Paradiso, Mark Rattell, Matthew Russo, Nicholas Russo, Preston Saravia, Omar Seem, Alexander Soriano, Gianluca Tarja, Michael Willis, Bashoy Zaki, Joseph Zunick, and coaches Rob Gogarty, Joe O'Teary, Bob Brady, Ryan Corbusaro, Omar Urson, Mike Risamini, and Andrew Vanderhorne. Now, therefore I, Christine Die, and Anthony Grosso, on behalf of the Cedar Grove Board of Education and our school district, hereby congratulate the Cedar Grove High School Football Team and wish them the very best of luck in the future. Congratulations.
Will our championship football team please come up and receive your proclamation? Thank you, guys. Okay, we have one more. Last, but certainly not least, Tara Smurler. I had written down one of the most decorated cross-country seasons in, in school history, but that just doesn't do it justice. It was the best. She, she is the best. She had the best cross-country season out of any runner we've ever had. You know, comes from a running family, awesome, awesome young lady. If you are local, you'll probably, you probably have seen her, her dad, her brother, running down Ridge Road, Pumped Nav, Little Falls Road, Ridge Road. It's, it's, it's why she, she had this season, she did. She finished first and won the Super Essex Conference Liberty Division Championship. She finished first and won the NJ SIAA North 2 Group 1 Championship. She finished second in the Essex County Tournament, which was questionable. Coach told me not to bring it up, but, but, you know, there's a little official ruling there that probably avoided her from, from being first in that. And she kept breaking our school record all season long, you know, probably four or five times this year. Finished with her best time of 18 minutes and 51 seconds, and that's, you know, pretty much a three-mile run there. You know, she's got, still got a lot of running to do. She'll be running in Maravien, but probably the best cross-country runner we've ever had here at Cedar Grove High School.
Cedar Grove School District Proclamation congratulating Cedar Grove High School's Tara Smurler on her cross-country championship season. Whereas during the fall athletic season of 2021, Tara Smurler placed first and won the NJ SIAA North 2 Group 1 Cross Country State Championship. Whereas during the fall athletic season of 2021, Tara Smurler placed first and won the Super Essex Conference Cross Country Liberty Division Championship. Whereas Tara Smurler broke and set a new Cedar Grove High School's school record for girls' cross-country with a time of 18 minutes and 51 seconds. Whereas during the fall athletic season of 2021, Tara Smurler placed second at the Essex County Cross Country Championships and fifth at the NJ SIAA Group 1 Championships. Whereas Tara Smurler earned First Team All-Conference, First Team All-County, and First Team Group 1 All-State for her 2021 accomplishments. Now, therefore I, Christine Die, and Anthony Grosso, on behalf of the Cedar Grove Board of Education and our school district, hereby congratulate Cedar Grove High School's Tara Smurler and wish her the very best of luck in the future. Congratulations.
Well, Tara, and I, and I know Coach Merklinger and Coach Laprot are both here, so come on up.
All right, moving on. I think we have our superintendent update next.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to start off with the first item, which is the Center for Clinical Services at Montclair State University in Schools residency program. The Cedar Grove Department of Mental Health has partnered with Montclair State University to address the emergent needs for our school district to provide access to quality mental health services for all of our school-aged children, their families, teachers, and community. The Center for Autism and Early Childhood Mental Health at the Center for Clinical Services at Montclair State University is providing Cedar Grove Public Schools with two licensed clinicians to establish residency on-site within the schools for up to 21 hours per week, which can be distributed over four days. Licensed clinicians are able to offer individual and group psychotherapy, crisis evaluations, and consult with teachers and families. This project is proposed to take place from January 2022 through June 2022, with additional hours available through the extended school year if needed and requested. An update on LRP. Last month, we shared that the survey of the property at 520 Pompton Avenue was in the completion stages. This stage has been completed with information that is beneficial to LRP. Through the survey, the Cedar Grove Board of Education was able to find that our property lines were defined allowing us to realize more property than previously thought. This will help in the design of traffic flow on and off the property, while Dan Dressel, district architect, works on several concept plans for the future. Our next steps are to meet with the township to present several concepts for this traffic pattern to begin the next steps in the planning stages. More information will be forthcoming in the new year. I had something planned here for the Cedar Grove Athletics, but Mr. Gogarty said it all. But I do want to thank all the athletes. I also want to thank all the coaches. This was a phenomenal season. This is unbelievable what the students accomplished, individually and as a team. So they should be definitely commended. And this was a wonderful way to bring people together as well. It's something that we all took pride in. So again, I want to just thank the athletes, and I want to also thank the coaches on their dedication. I also want to thank the parents, because as a parent of several athletes in my family, it takes a lot of dedication on your part as well, and a lot of sacrifice, and a lot of late dinners and missed dinners and a lot of traveling all over the place. So thank you as well. I also want to share that I was able to go to the high school concert last week, and I want to congratulate Jennifer Jessen and Bob Savino. I've never seen a concert here in Cedar Grove. Unfortunately, I did not have that opportunity last year based on that we're in the middle of COVID. It was unbelievable what the kids produced and the talents they possessed. And under the direction of Ms. Jessen and Mr. Savino, it was unbelievable. And I was very impressed with the Hallelujah chorus at the very end. That's quite a task to undertake, and it was done with the band, the symphony, and also the chorus. It was wonderful. So I just want to congratulate all the students who participated, and I also want to congratulate the directors as well. Earlier today, we sent out a letter about COVID resources. So I just want to share that. If you missed it, I do want to share that with you. Weekly COVID testing. Cedar Grove Public Schools provides weekly testing to the employees of the district through a laboratory company, Concentric Biolabs, funded by the state of New Jersey. This requirement for staff is based on a requirement by the state for weekly testing, but it is also available to our student body. And I believe back in November, I sent a letter out. We were receiving a lot of feedback from our families stating that it was difficult to get into an urgent care or even their own pediatrician to get tests. And now it's ramped up even more. So please understand that it is available here at LRP. Cedar Grove Public Schools have opened that availability not only to staff but our students. And for information, you can always visit our Return to Schools website. You click on the Parent Resource tab, click on Weekly Testing, and then you'll be able to see the FAQ that will help guide you as when to bring your child. Now that testing does take place 11:30 to 3 o'clock every Tuesday at LRP. So that would mean that you'd have to take your child out of school to bring them to get tested. But that's voluntary, that's based on your preference. Also, something new. It's an at-home COVID testing kit. New Jersey and Vault Medical Services have teamed up to offer at-home COVID-19 saliva testing for any person who believes they need to be tested, with or without symptoms, at no cost. The service is the only at-home test that will be acceptable when reporting results to your child's school. For more information, you can visit Return to Schools website, click on the Parent Resource tab, and then scroll down to Weekly Testing. Again, these services that are offered are voluntary in the state connected. And up to date, please visit the Return to School website. This is brand-new. This came to us last week. We researched it. You, according to the website, which is state-funded, that you will get your kit within a day, and then it's a saliva test. And I want to share also that if you do want to participate in the weekly test, that our employees participate, and that is also a saliva test. That is not a nasal swab. But you will be able to get those results within 24 to 48 hours. And that is registered on the state website as well with your test results. So I did want to share that with you, if that's something... No, is it for adults as well? Teachers could do this as well? It's for anybody in the state of New Jersey? Yeah, absolutely. So again, this is not something that is just for Cedar Grove. It's around the state in general. Again, it's... Yep, it just came out. Yep, okay, thank you. And I'd like to just turn everybody's attention to the Commissioner's report. And I do want to comment on this. And I've written something that I do want to share with you. I'm humbled by the decision of the Department of Education. Although we have been commended on the work we were attempting to do in the area of equity, diversity, and inclusion, the Commissioner abstained since she's a Cedar Grove resident, and the Assistant Commissioner upheld the Administrative Law Judge's decision. These past several months have been difficult for many as this survey has caused a divide in the community. The intent was not to divide, but rather identify areas of need. I'm a self-reflective man. These past few weeks have caused me to pause and look at the facts. For far too long, the survey has taken away from the good this district and the teachers have done. Every day, every week, and every month, the staff have dedicated themselves to making the experience that your children partake the best they can have. This has been overshadowed with the concept of the survey. I recognize the faults of the survey and myself in this process. We are imperfect people doing the work of an imperfect system. This judgment brings us closer to understanding the how and the why, and I would be negligent if I didn't recognize the lessons learned from this experience and how to do better. We must look forward and focus on the good. If we focus on the good, the good gets better. There is a lot of good around us, and the good can turn into great. I am a collector of quotes as they are a roadmap to how we can move forward in life. "The past is where you learned the lesson. The future is where you apply the lesson." I take this opportunity to share in that quote as we move into the future and the lessons learned are only as good as the person willing to accept them. I look forward to the good getting better, and I look forward to the continued work we are all moving towards as we do this together.
Thank you, Mr. Grosso. Moving on. From the Office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary, under minutes, can I have a motion for B1 through B5?
So moved.
Second.
B1 is a motion to approve the public and executive minutes of November 16. B2 is a motion to approve the budgetary transfers for the month of November. B3 is a motion to approve the Treasurers Report for the month of October. B4 is a motion to approve the Board Secretary Report for the month of October. And B5 is a motion to approve the Board Secretary's certification to the Cedar Grove Board of Education pursuant to the code that no line item account has encumbrages in expenditures which in total exceed the line item appropriation and violation of the code. Any discussion?
No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Miga.
Here.
Mr. Splendoria.
Aye.
Mr. Shoner.
I accept. I am abstaining from B1.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under bills, can I have a motion for B6?
So moved.
Second.
B6 is a motion to pay the list of bills that were in our packet for the time period November 17 to December 12. Any discussion?
No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Splendoria.
Aye.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under business, can I have a motion for B7 through B19?
So moved. Second.
B7 is a motion to approve the inter-local participation agreement with Byboard. B8 is a motion to approve the subscription busing contract with the parent to the student number listed. B9 is a motion to approve the purchase of 650 Chromebooks with CDW/Government through the Technology Supplies and Services Cooperative Bid at the cost listed. B10 is a motion to approve the donation of books in the Cedar Grove High School Media Center to the First Presbyterian Church of Verona. B11 is a motion to approve the application for use of Cedar Grove facilities with E-Arts Foundation/Essence Studios. B12 is a motion to retroactively approve the application for use of Cedar Grove facilities with Unbound Media Works. B13 is a motion to approve the proposal from Board Architect Dan Dressel for the architectural slash engineering services for the Leonard R. Park School Boiler Replacement Project. B14 is a motion to accept the district allocation of $37,418 for the Fiscal Year 22 Emergent and Capital Maintenance Needs Grant Program. B15 is a motion to approve the proposal from Montclair State University Center for Clinical Services to provide onsite licensed clinicians for mental health services. B16 is a motion to acknowledge that kindness for Christopher Pajama Drive to Matthew and Michael McAuliffe on their collecting of pajamas to be donated to patients at Hackensack University Medical Center. B17 is a motion to recognize the anonymous family who has generously donated Christmas gifts to disadvantaged Cedar Grove families. B18 is a motion to approve discarding outdated health textbooks at Memorial Middle School. And B19 is a motion to approve Teresa Ardo to participate, or I'm sorry, to provide eight 30-minute supplemental speech therapy sessions to the student number listed. Any discussion?
No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Splendoria.
Aye.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. From the Office of the Superintendent of Schools under Personnel, can I have a motion for S1 through... Through, one second. Through S31.
So moved.
Second.
S1, second reading. Be it resolved that the Board hereby affirms the superintendent's decision in HIB investigation involving the student number listed for reasons set forth in the superintendent's report to the Board and directs the Anti-Bullying Coordinator to transmit a copy of the Board's decision to the affected student's parents forthwith, confirmed non-HIB. S2, second reading. Be it resolved that the Board hereby affirms the superintendent's decision in HIB investigation involving the student number listed for reasons set forth in the superintendent's report to the Board and directs the Anti-Bullying Coordinator to transmit a copy of the Board's decision to the affected student's parents forthwith, confirmed non-HIB. S3 is a motion to appoint the following staff in accordance with the state emergent hiring start date procedures. S4 is a motion to approve Kathleen Natoli as the high school paraprofessional. S5 is a motion to retroactively accept the resignation letter of part-time lunch custodian Camus Summarine at South End School. S6 is a motion to approve Andrew Vander Horn for the stipend position of freshman assistant girls' basketball coach. S7 is a motion to approve Joseph Otteri for the winter weight room stipend listed. S8 is a motion to retroactively approve Rachel Root, North End Grade 1, non-tenurable medical leave replacement teacher. S9 is a motion to approve Rachel Root, South End, non-tenurable medical leave replacement teacher. S10 is a motion to retroactively approve Rachel Root as long-term substitute teacher. S11 is a motion to retroactively approve the following substitute teachers at the per diem rate listed. S12 is a motion to retroactively approve Michael Tedesco, high school teacher to instruct a 7th section class in history. S13 is a motion to approve the following employees at the rate of $35 per hour for the 21-22 school year. S14 is a motion to approve participation in the in-person robotics competition. S15 is a motion to approve the CDL agreement for employees. S16 is a motion to approve the following as school volunteer. S17 is a motion to approve the following lunch duty stipend for the following substitute North End employees. S18 is a motion to approve the following lunch duty stipend for the following substitute South End employees. S19 is a motion to approve the following winter coaches for the 21-22 school year. S20 is a motion to approve the following spring coach for the 21-22 school year. S21 is a motion to approve Tom Cattalo, high school stage crew advisor. S22 is a motion to rescind Virginia Parazone for Homework Alliance as of December 31, 2021, and approve Jessica Lawson for the stipend. S23 is a motion to approve kindergarten registration beyond the hours of a school day. S24 is a motion to retroactively approve physical education coverage by Jackie Lasky and Mike Valenzano. S25 is a motion to approve Denise Geddis as a home instructor. S26 is a motion to retroactively approve the following high school social studies teachers to instruct extra classes. S27 is a motion to approve reimbursement to Dawn Dora for criminal history fingerprinting costs. S28 is a motion to approve the following leaves of absence. S29 is a motion to approve Lauren Ocker, South End, non-tenurable medical leave replacement. S30 is a motion to authorize attendance at the following events. And S31 is a motion to approve Janet Bentley as high school set designer. Any discussion?
No.
I just have one question. Mr. Grosso, do we do home instruction during COVID? Are we doing it? They do go to the house? I was just curious. Thank you. That's it.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Splendoria.
Aye.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under policies, Mr. Davida, are you going to read us some policies this evening?
Yes.
All righty.
All right, we have four policies that are on for first reading tonight. Three of them are new, and one is a revision. The first one is Policy 1648.13. It's the school employee vaccination requirements. This new policy addresses the vaccination and testing requirements of Executive Order 253 that requires all public school district employees to be fully vaccinated or submit to COVID-19 testing at a minimum of one or two times per week. This policy is mandated. Policy 1648.14 is the safety plan for healthcare settings in school buildings. This new policy is needed because the New Jersey Department of Labor and the Department of Education has informed districts that the emergency temporary standards that have been issued by the Federal Occupational Safety and Health Administration applies to healthcare settings in schools, specifically a school nurse's office and any adjoining clinical areas in a school district building. This policy puts a district in compliance with the standards and is mandated. Policy 2425 is... Policy two four two five is for the Emergency Virtual or Remote Instruction Program. This new policy addresses the new provisions in a revised statute that permits a school district to implement a commissioner-approved program of virtual or remote instruction in the event the school district is required to close a school or the schools of the district for more than three consecutive days, school days, due to a declared state of emergency, a declared public health emergency, or a directive by the appropriate health agency or officer to institute a public health-related closure. These days of virtual or remote instruction will count toward the one hundred eighty-day requirement and is mandated for a school district that wants this option. And lastly, policy and regulation fifty-seven fifty-one is the sexual harassment of students. This policy is revised because of new federal regulations regarding the sexual harassment of students by school employees, other students, or third parties. The new regulations define sexual harassment, requires the school district to designate a Title IX coordinator, outlines notice requirements, and establishes reporting, investigation, hearing, and appeal process requirements, and both of these are mandated. Thank you.
Thank you. So under policies, can I have a motion for S thirty-two?
So moved.
Second.
S thirty-two is a motion to approve the first reading of the policies that Mr. Davida mentioned. Any discussion?
No.
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 Roll call, please.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Splendoria.
Aye.
Mr. Shonur.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under contracts, can I have a motion for S thirty-three?
So moved. Second.
S thirty-three is a motion to approve the following contracts for special education students as recommended by the Director of Special Services for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Any discussion?
No.
No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Splendoria.
Aye.
Mr. Shonur.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. At this time, the Board of Education offers members of the public an opportunity to address issues regarding the operation of the Cedar Grove Public Schools. In this section, we allow public comments on all school-related matters. Our regulations allot forty minutes for these communications. Again, each person shall be limited to three minutes. There'll be a countdown timer, and at the end of the three minutes, the microphone will be shut off and the speaker will be interrupted. Speakers may speak only more than once after they, after all others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the Board. All comments will be considered and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. This portion of the meeting is meant to hear public comment, not to have a dialogue between the Board and the person speaking. The Board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students, district employees, and members of the Board are discouraged and will not be responded to by the Board. The public is reminded that students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws of New Jersey. The Board bears no responsibility, nor will it be liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments, and be aware that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. All statements will be directed to me as the presiding officer, and no one may address the Board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, or defamatory, you may be interrupted, warned, or your participation may be terminated. Please also be reminded that if any person does not observe reasonable decorum, is disorderly or disrupts the meeting, you'll be asked to leave the meeting. The Board reminds those individuals who take this opportunity to speak to identify themselves by name and address and group affiliation, if applicable, every time you address the Board, and to limit their comments to items directly related to the operation of the school district. And I have a list going in order. The first person I have is Carolyn O'Connell.
Good evening. My name is...
We'll move that over here.
I'm sorry, what?
You can move that over. You don't have to stand there.
Good evening. My name is Carolyn O'Connell, and I live at Four Bordick Road. I'm here tonight to speak about my experiences with the Special Services Department, which I have found to be wholly inadequate. Before I start, I would like to thank the superintendent for meeting with me and for attempting to facilitate conversations between the director and myself to hopefully allow me to rescind my mediation request with the state. However, my son entered the school system January nineteenth of this year. He entered at age three after having missed the cutoff for last year, making this his official pre-K three year, and he entered with speech and language delays. In the course of not yet a full school year, because we haven't hit January nineteenth of two thousand twenty-two, I have failed to receive progress reports. His IEP was modified without actually having an amended IEP written and presented to me. I have failed to have proper communication. I have failed to have myself treated as an equal member of the IEP team. I have had my concerns dismissed. I have attempted to be silenced within these meetings, and the entire process I have found to be that the arrogance within the department is that what parents think doesn't matter, that what they dictate is just what should happen, and that it's the parent's job to come to these meetings and rubber stamp what they feel. Now, if I were a parent coming to you to say that I disagreed with a grade on a report card, and I went to the teacher and I asked for documentation supporting that grade, and I told you that the teacher couldn't provide me with anything, you would have a problem with that. When I requested documentation to support their findings that my son's services should be reduced, even though he didn't receive them the way he should have last spring, even though I had no documentation in the course of this time that he's been in the school system, I was told that those documents were not a part of his record, and therefore I had no legal right to view them, and even worse, that they were, and I quote, "memory devices" for the speech therapist to recall what she did in order to understand her classifications. That's unacceptable. If you're going to tell me with no warning, if you're going to blindside me in a meeting, you better be able to back up your viewpoint. You better have something to substantiate what you think is better than what I think. Because nobody knows any one's title better than your candidate.
Thank you. And Mr. Grasso, I know you met with Ms. McConnell, and you've advised her of, like, next steps?
Yes, I was just...
But she, I mean, next steps that she should take if she's not satisfied?
And our next steps as well.
Okay.
So I just want to thank Ms. O'Connell. I appreciate our conversations, and like we stated in our last meeting, you'll be hearing answers to your questions by this week. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Nicholas Splendoria.
Hi, all. Nicholas Splendoria. I live in Rose Terrace. I just wanted to come, and you know, as some board members are leaving, I wanted to thank this Board for stepping up. These have been tumultuous times the past four or five years in our country and our community. Y'all stepped up. Recently, we live in the shadow of a pandemic, and when our very democracy, the core of it is shaken, you guys have delivered government for the children of the town, for the parents, for the people of the town. I thank you. I also want to thank Ms. CTR. She's not here. She's been an incredible board member, again, delivering for the town, and I want to say, as someone who holds my party affiliation very deeply, it was really easy to support her even though we don't see eye to eye, and I think that's commendable. I would like to wish the best of luck to our board members-elect. Y'all have some big decisions coming up. We are in the new phase of the pandemic that needs to be addressed. You have to keep delivering equity and justice in the classroom, and you have to keep preparing students for college and the workforce, because that's incredibly important now. And now I want to thank my dad for being a great board member. I'm proud of him. I know, maybe everyone doesn't see eye to eye, but you don't know how much him being on the Board meant. I am really proud that he came up, he stepped up to the plate, and he served his community and his country when it needed him at a time when democracy needs heroes. He was one of the people that served on this Board, and I'm really, really proud. And I just wanted to thank you guys.
And you know how proud I am of you.
Thank you. Next, I have Michelle Moriello.
Michelle Moriello, fifty-one Benidav. Good evening. The New Jersey Commissioner of Education found that Superintendent Grasso and Board of Ed President Christine Dai violated two state laws, and the surveys issued were not voluntary. Under the Code of Ethics for Board Members, Board President Dai must, and I quote, "uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Education," among other things. As Board President and Member of the EDAC, the council that conceived of, designed, and administered the surveys, she has not acted ethically and responsibly. Under Superintendent Grasso's contract, he must perform his duties, and I quote, "in accordance with the laws of the state of New Jersey, and carry out the administration of Instruction and Business Affairs of the district in accordance with the legal obligations required by law." Given that he approved the administration of the surveys and published the results of them after parents objected to their legality, he has failed to faithfully perform his contracted duties. I ask this: What are the legal fees associated with defending this action? And why did you refuse to settle this and not take the survey down? Lastly, I would like to take a moment and thank Patricia Montana, Edith Fusco, Lisa Casili, Tom Perry, Agnes Norman, Janet DiCiano, and other parents who have worked tirelessly to put the truth out to the community, to expose the lack of transparency and failed leadership of this Board of Education and superintendent. Most importantly, you never gave up on our children. Christine Dai and Tony Grasso, your inability to conduct yourself in a manner that best suits the children of Cedar Grove is clear. You do not put the children of Cedar Grove first, and you failed as leaders. I call for your resignation. Our children were used as pawns, and in your evil charade, they will no longer be.
Thank you for your comment. Next, I have Janine Patel.
Hi, Janine Patel, eighty-seven Stevens Avenue. I have a question. The policy you just, you just, you just read about the Emergency Virtual and Remote Instruction Program. So I know I work in a school, and we've already been directed that we're sending home supplies on Thursday for that possible closure again, so I'm just curious to know, if you're given the option to close, will you close or stay open? If it's an option?
I think with that option, you'd have to look at your cases, right? So I'll share with you...
The case is that, this is, this is a mild variant. People are not being hospitalized.
Right, so what I want to share with you...
It's like a light flu.
Okay, so I'll share with you that based on our, our information that we have here in Cedar Grove, I'm not looking at other districts and their rates of contracting the virus. That decision would be made based on what we are seeing currently at that particular moment in time and how that would best serve the students in this district. I know that other districts have much higher numbers than we have, and we've been, I have to share with you, I'm pretty impressed with where we've been. We fluctuated anywhere between the mid twenties down to the single digits. So that's where we are currently. We're at twenty-one cases total. I think I would love for that to stay there or even go below. So a decision like that would have to be made taking into consideration all particular pieces of this, so...
I have one other question. Are you still sterilizing the schools the way that you were last year? Because I know in my district, they're not, and stomach virus is all over the place, the flu is going around. Are you cleaning the schools the way that you were cleaning them last year?
Yes, so if you actually go on to our return to schools plan, it will share with you what we do in each of the classrooms, the hallways, the bathrooms, commonplaces, as well as what we would do nightly, and then actually what would happen in the case of a, of a...
So on the weekends, you're not thoroughly sterilizing the schools again? You're not doing what you were doing last year?
As far as...
Well, we went, we had half-day on Friday, and you guys were thoroughly cleaning the rooms, spraying them down and...
Yeah, so what would make you think that we're not doing that?
I'm just asking if you're really doing that.
Yeah, absolutely. We have taken, we take very strong consideration into our cleaning procedures, what we use, the product that we use, and the manner in which we distribute that.
I just want to ask.
Yep, absolutely.
I had another question, too. Those trips sound amazing. Are you guys going to do the same thing to them that was done to the football team?
I will share with you, Ms. Patel, that...
I mean, I just think that, because my son loves, like, he would love to go on that Washington trip eventually. So I want to know, it's like, don't those kids have the right to know if they're going to have to have a fourteen-day quarantine? Are they going to have a virtual option? You know, because they're going out of state, right?
Right, so, so tonight...
If they're not vaccinated, then they have to...
Tonight was the first stage in presenting the trip.
Okay, I just want to make sure that something like that is put into that so that, you know, when it is something that's offered, that at least the kids know that they have been, before they, you know, decide they're going to do something like that.
Absolutely. So tonight was the first stage in presenting that to the Board to make the decision to approve that. In conjunction with that would be the recommendations based on where we are COVID-wise, and what precautions we would have to take to go on a trip like that.
Okay, only because people that are vaccinated are getting COVID now, so it doesn't matter whether you're vaccinated or not.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
I, the people, are people that are vaccinated are getting COVID, and that's concerning as well, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Next, I have John Martinelli.
John Martinelli, Dodie Hills, South Avenue. I just, unfortunately, last time we got together, the meeting was abruptly adjourned prior to, pretty, with the exception of Patricia Montana, to come up and voice her opinion on certain issues. As you know, I've been a big EDAC, not supporter so much, but wanting to get on there. So what happened was this secret society that's been going on for months now, we finally got some transparency a couple of months ago. So upon that, the superintendent said, I have the ability to get on. So what happened was, just to rehash, I tried to get on, another gentleman here, I'm not going to mention his name, but he knows who, tried to get on EDAC for a different point of view, because the whole town pretty much knows who's on EDAC now, and the point of view that's there. And you keep mentioning inclusion and diversity, yet I only see one point of view on it that I've mentioned many times. We all know it, so we can't, you know, so I guess by putting somebody like me on and that other individual, you may have a little better flavor, a little more inclusion and diversity on that board. So I was informed, excuse me, two meetings ago, that if I can mention a name, Ms. Dai exed Mr. Grasso, if she could follow up and see what they can do as far as any kind of word from another point of view on the EDAC, and it's been over two months now, and I still haven't received a call. So I just want to know what the status is and how we're going to make it more diverse, this EDAC committee, to have another point of view.
Sure, Mr. Martinelli. I know we've discussed this at length here at these meetings. So currently, right now, if you go onto the EDAC webpage, it shares with you the amount of members that are on that committee. I believe it's around twenty, twenty-one, around that range. That is at, right now, at capacity. So I will share with you that I know that as we go into the new year and we look at our committees and how we will look to reorganize that, and the qualifications for that, that's something that we can look at. You are always welcome to go and apply to be on that committee again. The reality of, and the reason why the number was of twenty to twenty-one was because the number can't be fifty, it can't be thirty. You start to have, it starts to become such a large amount. Now, do people who are currently on that want to stay on that? That will be determined, right? And so who, if someone leaves, then another person can replace that, and your name is definitely on that list. So currently, right now, we've had one meeting this year. We look to, we look to start to have those meetings again in the new year, and how we do that will be determined as we move forward. But your name is, you're not forgotten. you're not forgotten at all.
I haven't heard anything over two months.
Because right now, there are 20 to 21 members on that committee. We're not looking to increase the membership.
I understand that, Mr. Grosso, but you were supposed to get back to me over two months ago. Ms. Dye informed you to get back to me, and you said you were okay with that, and I didn't hear anything.
Well, then, Mr. Martinelli, I apologize for that. Okay, what I want to share with you is-- so we're clear and that we have a clear understanding of what the enrollment is on that committee. There is 20 to 21 members. Currently, it is at capacity. Right now, there is no-- we're not looking to raise that number. A 20 to 21 in that range is a good number of people to work with from a diverse background. But your name is still there on that list because you did apply to be on that committee. So I wanted just to share that with you, that you're not forgotten. And I apologize if I have not gotten back to you in the time that I said I would.
Okay. Thing is, though, Mr. Grosso, after that wonderful survey that was given out, how many people that were on that survey are still on this current board meeting? Current board for EDAC?
How many people that were on last year's EDAC--
Right, the ones that were handpicked.
--are currently still on it?
Yeah.
I can't give you-- I can't give you an approximate number. I'd say that probably around half of those people are still on there.
Okay.
I know that there were members that did not want to be on anymore.
Okay.
So they released themselves, and then there are new members on there as well.
How many new-- do you know offhand how many new members since the last one out of that--
Since last year?
2021? Yeah, in other words, when that-- I just want to get a feel for that survey that was given.
Well, that survey doesn't exist anymore, right?
Understandable. But how many new people are on that board from the originals? In other words, if you-- like, as you pointed out, if you have 21 people on that survey that got the whole town divided, how many of those members are still there? And how many of the new members are now on this board? That's all I'm asking.
I can't give you an exact number, but I could tell you the majority of the people that were on the EDAC last year are still on the EDAC, along with new members that have seeked interest on there from a diverse background. And that diverse background could have been from a-- it could be from a religious background. It could be from a, you know, ethnic background. So there were several new members that were placed onto that committee.
Can I just say one thing before I go? I appreciate your time on this. What I'm trying to still wrap my head around is the fact that this board was created, right? Because you feel-- not you-- excuse me, I don't want you-- that some people don't have representation. Looking at basically the audience and the different views that we have out there, I don't understand how this board had to be put together because not all voices were heard. Everybody--
Thank you, Mr. Martinelli. We appreciate your comment. Thank you, Mr. Martinelli. I appreciate your comment. Next, I have Lisa Casilli.
Good evening. Lisa Casilli. I live at Dogwood Court. I just want to say that the meeting that occurred-- I don't have anything official that I've written, so I'm just going to speak off the cuff with some notes that I took. As I said last time, having been in the field of education for 25 years, the events that occurred at the last board meeting really brought us to an all-new low. Having a planned walkout and board members walk off the stage and basically rob us of our rights to be heard was really unacceptable and unnecessary. So I just wanted to note that. I do appreciate, Mr. Grosso, that you are taking some responsibility for what's happened with the survey. I don't agree that it's overshadowed-- the controversy of the survey has overshadowed any good that we've done. I think that when something happens and it violates the law, it deserves to be acknowledged and recognized and appropriately remedied. I don't think that we are ignoring the good work that teachers and coaches and staff do in this school district at all. I do think, though, when we raised the concern back in June about the survey, it could have been easily remedied without legal matters getting involved, without legal fees, without all the back-and-forth controversy if anyone had just listened to our concerns. We're reasonable people. We're educators. We come from many different facets of life in terms of careers. We would have never gone before this board and begged for you to take that survey away had we not known that it would be illegal and that it wasn't the right thing to do with our children. None of us disagree with EDAC. I mean, I'm going to speak for those of us that I know. We don't disagree with EDAC. We understand the need for EDAC and the committee and for keeping the rights of students at the forefront. What we didn't agree with was that the way it was done-- and for that reason, I do call for the dismantling of the original EDAC committee. I think that since they developed and participated in the survey, which was done illegally to our students, and I assume, you know, brought forth to you as our super to put forth to the administration and staff since they created it and designed it, and everyone up there upheld the results of it and presented the results of it multiple times, that committee, the trust is completely eroded, and it needs to go. And there are members of that committee that lash out on social media and in person against those of us that disagree with what is done. And that is unfair and unfortunate. As an anti-bullying specialist and someone who trains districts on transgender issues, diversity, equity, and everything we're speaking about here, I take offense to being called homophobic, racist, and everything else by people who don't like when I have a different opinion. That is not inclusive or--
Thank you. Next, I have Patricia Montana.
Patricia Montana, 5 Emery Court. I did not prepare remarks this evening largely because I was uncertain if I would have an opportunity to speak. I still have my back turned to the Board, so I'm uncertain if they will be walking out. But I do think it is important for us not to move forward too quickly and for us to also reflect on the misconduct of this board at the last meeting. It's also important for us to reflect on the involvement that Board President Dye and Board Members Splendoria and DeChara had in the survey violation. Board President Dye and Board Members Splendoria were part of the EDAC committee. And Board President Dye, as the presiding officer over the board that approved the administration of the survey, has really a double hand in the administration of what turned out to be illegal. I do appreciate Mr. Grosso's statement. I do think that a more competent leader would have gauged the room a lot sooner and have changed the course of his conduct and his demeanor and his approach towards the community and those who brought action against the district. And I do think a more competent leader would acknowledge wrongdoing and give assurance to the community that the district under his leadership will not violate the laws again and that he respects the privacy rights of our children. That has to happen. You have to address the harm that has occurred and the trust that is broken. You have to acknowledge the wrongdoing, and you have to give us some assurance that, in fact, and indeed, the survey results have been discarded, will be discarded, and will not be used in any improper or sneakily way going forward. And Board President Dye says nothing on the legal action. The legal action was brought against Superintendent Grosso and the board. Board President Dye should also acknowledge wrongdoing. This is a significant outcome. The New Jersey Department of Education found that they violated two state laws. And rather than acknowledging that wrongdoing at the outset, they've expended board resources--
Thank you for your comment. Thank you for your comment. I appreciate it. Excuse me. I now call up David Grande. He's the next person on the list. Mrs. Montana, please. You've had your time, just like everybody else. Please. So please-- no, it's not fair that she gets to speak and other people don't. Excuse me. You know what? I'm going to call a recess until the room is-- can everybody can cooperate? Everybody has an opportunity to talk. I'm sorry. No, no, they don't. No, they don't. I'm sorry. Can our attorney please clarify that the people got three minutes? I call a recess. Can you please sit down, sir? Excuse me. We did not have a quorum. I checked with the attorney. We're calling a recess. Please stop. The board is in a recess. We will reconvene when we can. Let's go. We're not walking out. The meeting is not over at all. If you want to stop yelling-- if you want to stop yelling, sit down before I call the police, sir. Please.
Sir, please. Sir, please.
Right now, I'm walking off to call the police if you don't sit down because we don't feel safe.
Understood, sir. I understand, but please, at this time--
Please sit down.
I understand your question, sir. I don't know that you're going to be satisfied with the answer. Sir, the purpose of the meeting is for you to observe the meeting, to make your public comments, for the board to listen to your comments, respond when we can, and-- I understand, sir. I understand you're giving us an opportunity. I don't believe that's the actual purpose. What I would say to you is, I heard your question. I heard your concern. I think the board heard your question, heard your concern. I think at this point, the board policy calls for three minutes per participant. The chair of the meeting-- the chair of the meeting-- Sir, would you-- sir, I do understand your concerns. You've interrupted me a couple of times. What I'd like-- you're interrupting this meeting, quite frankly. At this point, we heard your concerns, okay? I hear you. If we can continue, we get the next speaker up. Everybody has an opportunity to address the board. When there's an answer that can be provided to you, sir, one would be provided. If it can be responded to during the meeting, it would be. But at this point, we need to move forward with the meeting. The next speaker-- well, the meeting has to be reconvened, but the next speaker has an opportunity to speak and address the board with their questions. I heard your question, sir. Some questions can be responded to during a meeting, and some cannot. When there is a matter that involves legal, student matters, or personnel, it will not be responded to during a meeting. Sir, if there's not a quorum-- I would tell you that I disagree with you. I don't know that I'm going to satisfy you with my answer to what happened at the last meeting. I wasn't at the last meeting. But I would tell you that if there is no longer a quorum-- while I understand your point, you need a quorum to vote. I understand your point. I disagree with that legal analysis, but that's neither here nor there. I don't want to get into the legal debate during a board meeting. And I'm telling you, sir, that if there's no longer a quorum or if the meeting was out of order-- hold on a second. You've interrupted me a couple of times. I just want to answer your question. I can't answer that for you, sir.
This is the problem. When I got here and I asked, "Are you violating any of the rules?" And Christine Dye said, "It is legal." And I want to know how she came to that conclusion. And if she did come to that conclusion, who on the legal staff gave her that information? And did she request legal opinion from the attorney? You have legal staff? Did she ask that question as to whether what they were doing was legal? Because that's the only way she could have said that. She had to comply with her legal staff. In order to get that opinion and to be at least honest, that she sought legal opinion on the survey. If she just felt, "Well, that's my opinion," that is not acceptable.
I call the meeting back in session. The next person I have up on the list is David Grand.
David Grande, 21 Timber Rock Court. I don't have a legal question, per se, but I do want to understand why two of the board members walked off the stage at our last meeting. Thank you.
So I close that portion of the meeting. So I close that portion of the meeting. A few, a few comments I have. First of all, I want to mention that I'm not sure why everybody, why two people left the meeting that night. I wasn't one of them. I stayed here. And I, there wasn't a quorum, so as I asked the attorney when I, at our last meeting, I could not continue the meeting. I'm sorry if you don't like that, but I even asked the guidance, and I was told we could not continue the meeting. I'm sorry you don't believe me, but that's the legal, that's exactly what the attorney said. And I'm not going to debate everybody. That's what happened. So anyway, moving on. I did not, I did not direct any board members to leave at all. Anybody who left, left on their own accord. Can you, can you-
Why did you ask for that guidance? It didn't happen at-
It did too, because I turned around, I looked at Mr. Merlino, and I said, do I have to end the meeting because we don't have a quorum? And he said, yes.
I'm not Mr. Merlino.
No, I'm sorry. I'm like, when I looked back at that night, and that's what I said. Anyway, moving on.
You want to know why I left? Okay. Because for the past 11 months, I've watched people get up here and denigrate this woman who's given 10 years, 10 years of volunteer service for your kids. And this gentleman right here, that hiring him is just about the one thing I'm proudest of, of being on this board, okay? And I'm just tired of hearing you people get up. Hey, shut up! I'm talking, all right?
All right, Mr. Splendoria.
All right, but that, no, they want to know why I left. That's why I left. I was tired of hearing them get proud.
I understand that it's emotional, but please don't yell, okay? Please, please stop, okay?
Sir. Sir.
No, no, sir. No, sir. He told me to shut up, right? So where did this put our attitude for him walking out? You keep hurting his damn head.
I'm not a lawyer, answers legal questions in public.
Anyway, I'd like to move on, and I want to mention that it is Nicole and Len's last meeting, and I'm sorry that Nicole couldn't be here this evening. I want to say that, that actually, Len and I didn't start off as friends, contrary to what social media says. Actually, Len didn't even like me in the beginning, and Len voted for the other guy. But I'm glad that Len and I did become friends, and I appreciate all the work that you've done on the board.
Thank you.
And you have done an excellent job through trying circumstances, to say the least, you know? And I appreciate Ms. DeChara, who served a little bit longer. Again, she and I didn't always have the, you know, the same views on things, and that's what's good about being on the board, is that not everybody agrees on everything. But we do, at the end, come together for the betterment of the district. We may come about it different ways, and we may see things a little bit differently, but at the end of the day, we come together, and that's what's most important. And I appreciate her different opinions because I think it made the board a far better place having both you and Ms. DeChara on the board. And I will miss you, and I want to thank you for your service, and we really appreciate it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. It was my pleasure serving on the board.
Thank you.
All the things that we did in the past two and a half years is pretty amazing.
Thank you. Any further comments, Mr. Shoner? So one thing I want to talk about is that, that some people think that, you know, I should resign because I bear more responsibility in the survey or because I'm the board president. And the truth is that, as board president, I have no more authority than anyone else on this board. We act as a board together. We make decisions together, and that's just the way it is. You know, I'm the person that has to, you know, keep the time and keep the gavel and try to keep the order, and that's definitely been a little bit trying the past year, to say the least. But we do everything together. And I want to, I'd really debated, but what the heck? You know, this whole survey thing, it came from the best of intentions. It really, truly did. And I understand, you know, as Mr. Grosso said, that, you know, we could have gone about it differently, and next time we will, absolutely. Because I still think that it's important, and it's important to find out how kids are doing. Because kids are, a lot of kids are not doing well. And we talk about, you know, some people have talked about the harm, the harm that was done by them having the survey. And I think, I think originally, this became, you know, this was about the students, and this was about protecting the students. But I think after a while, you know, it wasn't. Because if we want to talk about harm and what's harming our children, let's talk about parents who are okay with their students, or, I'm sorry, with their children, calling other students faggots. Let's talk about administrators from other districts that sit there and bully cheerleaders at a football game or text students to encourage other kids to bully those students. Let's talk about parents who heckled students at the GSA and told them that they should get over it when they sat up here and they poured out their heart and their soul about their feelings. I mean, that's what's hurting. I mean, that's, that's, that's the problem. I mean, let's, you want to talk about what's harming, let's talk about, you know, we haven't received any pilot money in, for three years. How do you think, how do you think we pay for all the extra students from the Hilltop? We've been promised money for three years now, and we haven't gotten a dime. And now, is it a political movement? Because now I'm told that we're going to see something in January, but we haven't seen anything in three whole years. So I think we need to look at the bigger picture about what's really, really harming our kids. And we're not going to stop our work on equity and diversity. There are students who need help, all right? There are students who don't have a voice, who aren't treated fairly, who are marginalized. They're gay, they're transgender, they're black, they're brown, they're Asian, they're all different things. They're the kid who, somebody's not following the IEP, or the kid that gets made fun of, or the kid who looks a little weird and he gets picked on, or she gets picked on. They all need a voice. And even though this is my last meeting as president, I'm going to continue to be up here, and I'm going to be their voice, and that's not going to stop. So I thank you very much, and everybody have a good evening. And I call for an adjournment to end the meeting. Roll call, please. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Second.
Mr. Shoner.
Oh, aye.
Ms. Di.
Yes. This meeting is over. Everybody have a good night, have a good holiday. The next meeting is our reorg meeting on January 4th. There won't be an executive meeting that night, so the meeting will start at 7:30 in the auditorium. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening. Good night.